Everybody got so quiet. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I please remind everybody to turn off your cellphones? Or at least turn off the ringers? Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lamack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holste.
Here.
Mr. Weinthal.
Here.
Mayor Havacorn.
Thank you very much. We start off our first meeting of the month. Is this the first meeting of the month? That's right, yes, because we didn't meet the first meeting. So this is actually the first meeting of the month. It's the only meeting of the month. And we start the meeting off with the public comments. Speakers will be not limited to the number of topics you can talk on, but we prefer if you do, or we want you to keep in mind that you cannot speak on anything that's on the agenda as a public hearing. When that comes up as a public hearing, you can speak at it at that time. You'll be limited to three minutes to address the council. And we'll start off with first row? Second row? Remember to state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney, and the city staff. Good evening, the Matse and Satshri Kal. My name is Raj Verma. I am a resident of Town of Davie since 1998, 2901 West Abiaka Circle, Davie, Florida. Thank you for the Hindu Heritage Month and Diwali Day proclamation tonight. We appreciate the support we receive from the town's leadership on a regular basis. As many of you know that each year through our charitable organization, Guma Kunda Foundation collaborates with the town staff and donates hundreds of school backpacks for needy children in Davie and other cities in the tri-county area. Thank you again, as we extend the greetings of Diwali, which signifies hope, peace, and victory of light over darkness, well into Hanukkah and Christmas to all of you. Thank you so much. And I have with me Shekhar Reddy of Guma Kunda Foundation and Venkat Reddy representing the community. Thank you again. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you very much. We were all at PAL when you gave, we had the backpack giveaway, and it was very, very successful.
Thank you so much. We do it regularly with the city staff's, you know, cooperation. So they deserve the thank you also.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the third row, fourth row? Okay, seeing none? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Looking forward to this one. Since Phil's getting up, I think he's going to introduce the next item, which is the presentation on Small Business Development Center. That's what's number one? Did you reverse it?
I apologize. I thought Town Hall was number one, so.
It's changed on this agenda on the backup.
So I would defer to Leona to introduce it.
This is what I just got. This is the latest that was just given to me tonight. So, okay, you want to do the Town Hall first?
It's on number two on here.
I know, I see the.
Okay, they switched it. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Phil, and we're going to do a presentation on the progress of Town Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We're going to be providing an update on the 95% design related to Town Hall. This is our fourth and final presentation of the design. As directed back in September of 2024, when you approved the Kaufman-Lynn contract, you asked us to come back four times, and this is the fourth and final time as reference. Tonight for the presentation, we have Perry Douglas from Song and Associates. They are the architect for the project. And then we have Randy Perez representing KL, who is the contractor for the project. So I'm going to turn it over to those gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Hey, Randy.
Just talk into the microphone.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Perry Douglas. I'm with Song and Associates and have been involved with the architectural end of things on this project. And we've been very excited and have had a wonderful time with your staff to get where we are. Am I, do you have something I can hit?
Yeah, could you just move into the mic a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so architecturally, since the 80% presentation that we did a few months ago, there's not a lot that has changed with the design. In fact, we've been moving forward with everything, and it's moving into construction right now. So Randy's going to have the bulk of the work here tonight, talking about where that's going. What we have updated on this presentation is there was discussion at the last meeting regarding the main turnaround where you're coming into the drop-off for council chamber, adding a water feature. Now, that feature is not designed yet, but we have already put into place, design-wise, power and water to get something out there. And then we'll be working with the town to put together a design of exactly what that feature might be. You might also notice out on the north end of the site, we had included some, a paper area that you could, I guess, early on in the presentations, before we were even given the project, there was discussion about having like a area that you could set up for food trucks and have something that we could, that you'd be pedestrian-friendly to get around in that area. And also, as you go towards the rodeo area, there's a little circular plaza that's been added in that area as well. So other than that, design-wise, there is not a lot that has changed with what you've seen previously. If there's any questions as far as where we are on the exterior of the building, I'd be happy to address what you might have. And then the square footage of everything has stayed exactly the same. We've maintained the design as we worked through with your staff. Coming up to this point, where the first floor is going to have customer service and council chamber, building department, chamber commerce and community services. The second floor has engineering, IT, and code compliance. The third floor has planning, zoning, budget, and finance, and human resources. And then, did I miss one?
I haven't.
Yeah, we missed a floor.
That's all right. That's a secret. That's our offices.
The fourth floor is going to be the council offices and, okay. And as we get beyond that, does anybody have any questions as far as the design or the, you know, that end of things?
We're just excited to see the walls being poured and the plan for.
So Randy will kind of go through where things stand as far as time-wise and.
Absolutely. And I'll try to keep as close to the mic as possible. It's difficult up here. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Randy Perez. I am one of the many touted people leading this project, most of which are sitting in this room right now, actually. So progression-wise, obviously, if you stop or drive by the site, you see a lot of movement going on right now. So everyone understands, we're working on two big items concurrently. We're working on forming and pouring those tilt panels. Those are the panels that are going to be forming the walls of the Town Hall. And then we're also working on the foundations right across 65th Way, right there, or 65th Avenue. I apologize. As we progress, and I'll go through a high-level timeline here, the intent for tilt wall panels to be completed with standing up is right before the winter holiday. I wouldn't want to say caution, but I'll let you know, you will see it go up pretty quickly and wonder if, hey, are we ready to move in? There's going to be some time while we build out the inside of it. But it will go up rather quick. That's the beauty of the tilt wall process. A lot of coordination beforehand, and then it goes up fast. So as we go into the new year, around the end of the first quarter, we'll have completed our structural steel. Right after that, we'll work into framing our drywall. Those offices that you saw before, those will start to get formed up and framed out. Towards next summer is when our bigger equipment starts getting to the site, our generator, our chillers, that'll work to cool down the building. And then we'll look to start placing right around when we're doing our finishes, kind of towards the end of next year, our plumbing and electrical fixtures. So those final lighting fixtures, the toilets, the water coolers, which are those water fountains and what have you. And then we'll continue on with the paint tile for completion roughly towards April, May of the following year, and looking to do a TCO early that summer. From there, we'll do our punch list with Ozdel, Jerry, and team, everyone walking through and really seeing that the final product is what you guys are looking for. So it's an exciting timeline. There's a lot of movement on site in a good way. It's full-on construction, and we're, the team is working very closely with the town team here to make sure that the project is successful. And it's as beautiful as it looks in those renderings that Song and Associates team is prepared, and you guys have worked so hard to move forward with. And I think I do have a picture here, if I'm not mistaken. This is just the general aerial. This is actually the tilt panels. I thought it'd be neat for you guys, for the town to see the council members and everyone in attendance. Really, those are the walls of your building that are there. The scale, you really can't tell until you go on site, but those are what will get poured, formed, and then stood up, turning into the building. They'll get brought across the street, which is where the Town Hall plat is, and will stand up. And you'll see soon enough, before the end of the year, hopefully, we have a nice holiday surprise where you see a building standing up. So that's another view of just the progress going on on site. So a lot of movement. Hopefully, the team is as excited as we are. This is all a team together. So that is the presentation.
Thank you very much. I've been on site and watched them pour in the concrete for the walls.
Yeah.
Oh, God. It's been so long. I'm coming.
I have a question.
Question?
Yes.
Okay, so on your timeline there where it says April?
Yes, ma'am.
2026?
Seven.
Oh, okay. So the walls will be up and the roof will be on?
Yes, so the April 2026, you will see, yes, the roof will be on. We'll have our roof deck. And by around that time is when it'll actually be poured. It's a cool lightweight concrete pour that's going on there. So yes, that time is accurate. You'll see the walls stood up before then, and then the roof will come after.
I was just hoping it was before hurricane season. Thank you.
So I also see on there that in August, we got the permit for the earthwork and underground.
Yes, ma'am.
How far along are you on the underground infrastructure? I asked, I guess, staff, and they said, oh, well, we're going to have an update soon. So could you probably give me an update?
Yeah, of course. So for the underground, as it relates to the building itself, we're working on that, funny you ask, coincidentally, this weekend into the next, to get into the building. That's all of our electrical, our plumbing, our sanitary lines, all the things that really make that building function. The remainder of it, we're working closely with staff to make sure that the drainage design that we have is what the town expects. So I'd say, I'd love to put a pin on, we have some meetings coming up to finalize that, but I guess that's the best answer for you. For the building itself, there's no issue when we're moving forward with it. The rest of the site, we're really just trying to make sure that the expectations in the final product you guys are delivered is something that'll last you for years to come.
Yeah, because early on, when we were all discussing this too, we realized that there was a lot of aging pipes that needed to be removed as well. And, you know, some of them may have had the asbestos linings. And I didn't know if that was going to hold us up if we didn't get on that right away and getting that, because we had to put the new pipes in. And apart from everything else, the drainage and the.
Yeah, so I can tell you what we're working through right now is that isn't going to be, whatever's aged or need to be removed sanitary-wise, we're TVing those lines, meaning we're taking cameras and making sure that it's not, you're not going to have something that's aged, you know. The intent is to have a new and functioning system.
Right.
And if we're using existing, it works.
The older pipes that were there were a lot smaller.
Yes, ma'am.
Than the ones that we use now. So if you're pushing water from a large pipe into a small pipe, that's not going to cut it, especially for a building that size now.
There's very minimal use of existing pipe on the project site itself. There's a lot of new going in. So we're working closely with John and team, and I see you looking over there as well at Ozdel and team, so.
That's on you guys. You heard.
Yeah, let me just add to that. As a reminder, we are rebuilding the lift station. That's west of Town Hall. That serves Town Hall. That'll be serving the redevelopment that's happening in the area. When we're talking about drainage, we're talking about the drainage for the parking lot between Town Hall and the rodeo grounds. As you know, in the past, that's been a challenge in terms of drainage, where you'd have a significant rainfall, and there'd be a lot of standing water. So that's where we're finalizing that design, because that's important. So when he's talking about drainage, he's not talking about surrounding the building. We're talking about the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
It's been a long time. Okay, now we'll have the update on the town's partnership, Small Business. Leona Henry, you're on. You got some folks in the back that are coming up too?
Yes, I have Raphael.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Councilmembers, administrators, staff, members of the public. I am Leona Henry, the Development Administrator. I just want to take this opportunity to introduce to you Raphael Cruz, the Assistant Director of the Florida Business Development Center at FAU. He will be providing and sharing some insights on the town's SBDC program, the one that we have in place. So I'll hand it off to Raphael.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay. And Town of Davie council members, and thanks all the staff that are here. Actually, this is not our program. It's your program. So I'm going to tell you what you've done to help small businesses, okay, over the last year. You've helped, total of 97 businesses have been helped by your program, okay? And 13 of our consultants worked with your team to help those businesses, right? Got $180, excuse me, $184,000 in government contracts, I think, three businesses, all right? Got that? You had one business start, which is great. We try to get people to start, to talk to us before they start them, because we start them right, as opposed to them starting the business and then finding out. Anybody in here? Raise your hand if you own a business or you've run a business. Go ahead, raise your hand if you've owned a business or run a business. Great. So then you know how hard it is to do it, okay? So and if you could have talked to somebody that gave you a couple of pitfalls before, you would have talked to them and said, you know what, I would have saved $500,000 on this, right? So we try to get them to talk to us beforehand. So let them know to talk to us before when you hear somebody says they want to start a business, okay? So there we go, right? We had specialized programs within the program. And one of those is tech commercialization. And we had 20 businesses, okay, do branding, right? And we had, I want to make sure I got my numbers right, specialized training. Now, 20 businesses did do the tech commercialization, okay, program. And what that is, is when they have an idea of some type of technology, and how can they commercialize it? So not just any idea is a good idea, but how do you turn it into a profitable business really is the difference. And that's what that training is about, all right? We had 14 companies went through a brand development hyperphase program that we do, where we train them, okay, on what's good branding, what's good marketing, what are the results of those things should be, and how to start planning for those things, how to plan branding, how to plan marketing, right? Now, coming up for next year, okay, coming up for next year, we have a couple of workshops planned. We're going to continue to do the same things we've been doing, working with you to help the small businesses in the town of Davie, right? But what we want to do is, we want to do a couple of mini-conferences and some workshops. Two of them, we're going to focus on manufacturing, onshoring, and trade. And that, of course, is decided with the team, okay, that works with us and you. You let us know what you want, what the businesses need, and we try to come up with those events, right? Right? Another is focused on soft skills and development leadership, okay, and communication, right? And then the fourth is being developed as a mini-conference for economic development partners and industry leaders. And that's around businesses getting to know their industries better. There's a lot of changes happening. You got AI happening. You got a lot of things moving quickly. Businesses has to be able to pivot. So they really need to be experts in the industry, not just in their own business, right? So if you have any questions, please let us know. Otherwise, thank you very much. They told me three minutes. I try to keep it to three minutes, all right?
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Go through our tabling memo here. On the consent agenda, staff is requesting tabling to January 7th for 32 and 33, the site plan and the plat for Wyatt Estates. May I have a motion for that?
Motion to table number 32 and number 33 until January 7th, 2026.
Okay, that's the site plan and the plat for Wyatt Estates.
Second.
And we have a second. May I have a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. On the public hearing side, we have a request to table to January 7th, the rezoning on Wyatt Estates. May I have a motion?
Motion to table the number 42 rezoning to January 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then we also to table to January 7th, number 43, the land use amendment for Wyatt Estates. Have a motion, please.
Do a motion to table number 43 land use amendment.
To January 7th.
To January 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that needs to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now we are. That takes us to 34. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, just double-checking before I. Okay, number 34 is a code amendment. This is the second and final reading. Mr. Weinthal, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 12, subdivisions, site plans, and certificates of use, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak for or against this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or concern by council? May I have a motion to approve code amendment number 34?
Motion to approve number 34 code amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Mayor, just if I may, a point of privilege. Item for Hope Outreach has been approved for the lease agreement. We do have Father from St. David who is here. I don't know if he's here to speak on that issue or not. No? You okay? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Number 35 is code amendment. This is a first reading. Mr. Weinthal, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 10, Planning and Development, Division 7, Public Participation, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Okay, the public hearing on this ordinance will be held on November 5th, but it's also part of the public hearing today. So if anybody wishes to speak on this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, anybody have any questions or concern? May I have a motion to approve number 35 code amendment?
Make motion to approve number 35 code amendment.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 36 is the Defined Benefit Plan Amendment. Mr. Weinthal, would you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the Defined Benefit Plan of the Town's Retirement Plan and Trust for the Management and General Employees of the Town of Davie, amending Article 9 vesting to allow for removal of early retirement references that are not applicable, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. This is an open public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this, please step forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. The hearing, next hearing on this will be on November 5th. Does anybody from council have any questions or concern? Okay. Could I have a? Could I have a motion then to approve number 36 defined benefit plan?
Motion to approve number 36 defined benefit plan amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, we're going to take the, and I think I'll take all of the... Lady of Victory, I think they're all together, aren't they?
Yes, ma'am, you could discuss them together, but not them separately.
Right. Because, so I'm going to hold 38 till after we finish the Lady of Victory?
You may do that, Mayor, yes.
Okay. Should we do it all together? Okay, number 37 is a rezoning. Mr. Weinthal, would you read this by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with the Town of Davie, Florida, approving rezoning application ZB 24156 Our Lady of Victory, changing the zoning designation of certain lands within the Town of Davie from agricultural AG to community facilities CF District, amending the town zoning amount to comply therewith, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Has quasi been waived?
Yes, Mayor.
On all the items?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. And then the public hearing on this will be also on November 5th. So if anyone from the public would like to speak for or against this item, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, did we want to...
Well, did you want me to do all the items at once, Mayor? I could read all the Lady of Victory items at once, there's more.
Oh, okay. But I've already closed this on the rezoning, so let's do that, and then we'll do the others together.
Okay.
Okay? Anybody have any questions on this? Do we need a presentation on this? I think that... Does anybody want a presentation?
I don't need one, there.
What?
I don't need one.
Yeah, we're very comfortable with it, I don't think, it's been around for a while.
We've been well briefed.
Yes. Okay, so then we're, I'm looking for a motion to approve 37, the rezoning.
Motion to approve number 37, the rezoning.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so then, Mr. Weinthal, if you read 39, 40, and 41, and then we'll do each one separately.
Yes, Mayor. Number 39, special permit, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on special permit application SE 24-157 Our Lady of Victory, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. Number 40, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V 24158 Our Lady of Victory, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. Number 41, variance, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V 24159 Our Lady of Victory, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak at this point on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or concern by council? Okay, may I have a motion to approve 39, special permit?
We had opened it for the public?
I thought I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Didn't I?
Yes. I apologize.
And nobody came up, so I closed. So could we have a motion to approve special permit number 39?
I'll make a motion to approve special permit number 39.
Second.
Clerk?
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Number 40. This is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to speak for or against this variance? May come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the variance, number 40?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance, number 40.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And number 41 is also a variance. And I had opened all three to public hearing, but I'll do it again. Anybody that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions, council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve number 41 variance?
I'll make a motion to approve number 41, the variance.
Is there a second? Thank you for the second. Roll call.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And this was a long journey. We think that we have finally come up with a good project here, and I appreciate everybody working together on this. So, congratulations. Thank you. And so, last item then is now going to be 38. This is a variance. This is the Marty variance that was requested by Mr. Lewis to be reconsidered. Mr. Weinthal, will you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor, and quasi is waived. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V 25-065 Marty, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this project may come forward at this time. And I think we're going to forego the presentation since we had been through it already. Thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Matt Lines, I'm an attorney.
Can you speak into the microphone, David?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
It's a challenge. Hi, my name is Matt Lines, I'm an attorney, I'm representing Ms. Marty with respect to this variance. I've been here before two or three times now, dealing with this variance and trying to get your honorable help in getting it approved. I want to just run through really quickly, you know, our position towards this. I understand that it's now being, I guess, reconsidered, even though it was granted the last time I was here. And I just wanted to, first of all, reserve a minute or two to rebut whoever else may wish to speak to these issues. I want to say that out of the box here, and the gate itself, it complies with the regulations, and really, no variance should be required at all. The regulations state, quote, "Fences located outside the building envelope shall be no more than 50% opaque," end quote. So the regulation clearly applies to fences and not gates. The term fence is actually defined in the code, and that definition does not include the word gate. It includes other words like shrubs and other things, and it says it's a barrier used as a boundary. And of course, a gate is a means of ingress and egress to a property. Even if you could consider a gate to be part of a fence, the fence itself is very large, and if you include the gate in the fence, it still meets the opacity requirements of the regulations. So, we don't think a permit should be required at all. However, that brings us to the question, why are we here? Why have we had so many hearings for this variance? And the answer to that is that there's a neighbor dispute that my client found herself in the middle of when she moved into the property and there was an Airbnb being run out of a neighboring property. And the other neighbor that's behind all of this was in a dispute with that Airbnb neighbor. And my client was asked to be a witness to a hearing. She was a third-party witness, and she refused to testify falsely. She truthfully testified that the activity at the Airbnb did not bother her. She was not aware of any loud noises or parties or anything like that. That caused this particular neighbor that's behind all of this, who sent dozens and dozens and dozens of emails to the people at the town to try to get them to go after my client for this gate, caused him to be upset, and he said he was going to get her. So, here we are, trying to defend a variance that we shouldn't even have to get in the first place because the regulations themselves do not actually prohibit the gate that we're talking about. Now, my client did not just willy-nilly decide to put up this gate. She actually had a damaged gate that she replaced. She reached out to the town and was advised she did not need a permit, she was just replacing a gate. She replaced the gate, she looked at the regulations, she didn't see any regulations related to gates. And so she installed the gate, and in deciding to install the gate, she installed an anti-theft backing to the gate to protect because there had been some recent car thefts, including one in her, or attempted thefts in her driveway. She drove around the neighborhood to see what sorts of fences might be, what sort of gates might be okay. I have here a small sampling of all these opaque gates that are in the neighborhood. There's, I think, nine or 10 of them here. And I'll pass them up, if I may, hand them up to the deputy. Just for your, for your consideration of this matter, that my client's not the only one that has a gate like this. And I think there's been a suggestion in one of these meetings that perhaps there are others out there that are, that have opaque gates that are subject to enforcement proceedings. We made a public records request for all such situations, and we got two, and they both related to gates that were not maintained properly. None of them were opacity issues with gates. So, again, this is a very uncomfortable situation, I think, for everyone involved. My client, in good faith, reached out, determined she didn't need a permit, looked around, found gates that matched the neighborhood, that matched other gates that were up. She had no idea, based on the regulations, that there would be a problem, and we're merely seeking to get a variance because we know, based on the history here, if we can't get a variance, it's just going to continue. There's going to be continued requests for enforcement against my client for this gate, and we'll be forced to seek relief at a different venue, which would be unfortunate for all involved, which we're trying to avoid. So we're asking, please provide my client some peace so she can sleep at night and not worry about this issue, and grant this one-time variance for this unfortunate situation. Again, we'd like to reserve just a few minutes to rebut what we expect to be some information provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Good evening, do I have to present?
State your name and address, please.
Daniel Munivar, 13701 Pine Meadow Court, here in Davie.
Can you hear me?
No. Speak right into the mic, please.
Hello. Is that okay?
Better.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Paul. I want to start by saying that I experienced intimidation regarding this variance. On the morning of September 19, Jesus Navarro approached me while I was doing yard work. He was upset that I rescinded my vote to approve their gate variance. He became agitated and told me more than once that he would sue the beep out of me if I went to the hearing against the gate. He also said that he has big corporate lawyers. He said, "I'm going to sue you, and it's going to cost you, you don't want to be my enemy." I live directly across from the Marty house, we've always been friends. I have two small children that frequent the sidewalk. Additionally, all of the neighbors use it for walks. When thieves jumped the fence to go into their car, they did not reach through the gate, they just jumped over the columns on the side. A solid gate would not have deterred them any more than a see-through gate. I would like to request the council deny this variance. First, I'm concerned that if they sell their home, the property could be purchased by someone looking to operate another short-term rental. We already have a nuisance Airbnb between us, between me and Mrs. Marty's property, which has caused ongoing problems with noise, drugs, violence, other legal activities, and other legal activities. A completely enclosed property, blocked completely from view, would be very attractive to future problematic buyers. And I've seen more of these Airbnbs popping up, and I've spoken to neighbors, that they are also nuisances. Second, the same nuisance vacation rental between us has been emailing the town for its own variance for a solid six-foot gate. Mayor Paul mentioned in a previous hearing that it's hard to approve one variance and deny another. If this variance is approved, the short-term rental could use it as precedent to get this approved, to get theirs approved, further enabling the disruptive behavior. Police have been called to our street many times. A solid fence makes it harder for responding officers to see into a property, potentially putting them in danger. This gate has not been wind-tested, it has no hurricane certifications. In the event of a major hurricane, I'm concerned this type of solid gate could be ripped out, become a serious hazard. Florida does state that with variances, it should be a real, unique, and not self-created hardship. But there's no unique hardship to this property. The reason for the variance request is due to a self-created problem by replacing the gate with something that is not compliant. In the end, a gate that meets the town ordinance provides the security needed without needing a variance. Thieves will jump the concrete columns, which are only three feet tall. I don't see any special circumstances that makes this property any different than the rest of the houses on our street. Planning and zoning has denied this, they said it does not meet the ordinance requirements. I believe they know best, they also talked about how it doesn't meet wind requirements, or it has no certifications. If it's the town's position that they want to start to allow solid, taller fences and not require hurricane-approved structures, I requested the town, the town works on changing the ordinances, that way everyone can have the fence that they want. I do have here the emails showing that the Airbnb, if you want to pass this on, has been requesting their own fence, and an image showing just me and my other neighbor that have rejected, and where the location of the Airbnb is as well. So you can see the layout of the street.
That was your time, can you finish?
Yes, thank you so much, that's all.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I may interject there really quick. So a comment was made about not requiring a permit. If the fence is approved in whole or in part tonight, they would need to get a permit. So it would be an after-the-fact permit, and they would have to get an inspection to make sure it meets the Town of Davie code and the South Water Building Code.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? State your name and address, please, and speak into the mic.
My name is Maria Martinez Munivar. I live in 13701 Pine Meadow Court, same street. Thank you for allowing the time for us, for me to speak. I've actually stood before you twice for representing Moms Demand Action for Gun Saints in America, and the safety of the community is very important to me, that's why I'm here today. I wanted to, to express, you know, we bought our house 13 years ago, almost. It was the first home, I'm sorry, I get emotional because this is a big deal for me. This is our first home as a married couple, this is where I brought my children when they were born, this is where we've been raising our children all this time. And it was a very happy home, very happy street for many, many years, until that short-term rental. And even though the short-term rental issues in itself don't have anything to do with Mrs. Marty's request, I do want to make a point, so if you allow me. Since that short-term rental has been there, there hasn't been anything more than anxiety, loss of sleep, loss of peace, loss of sense of safety for me and my family. Time and again, I have seen suspicious activity that makes me unsafe and uncomfortable. Cars coming in and out at late time in the night, just stopping for a few minutes and then taking off, that makes me think that maybe there's drug dealing, drug selling in the street in that house. Red cups delivered to my front door, and thank God we were out of town because my kids could have opened that door with who knows what, we see it in the Ring camera, and then one of the tenants that was there before picking up that front, that red cup from my front door. We've seen vaping devices, bongs, and marijuana containers in my yard on the fence border. You know, obviously, my kids and my dog can access that. We've seen cars taking off at full speed on our short street during the day and at night, being extremely disruptive with noise, but extremely dangerous as well. My kids walk the dog, I walk the dog with them, we, you know, we walk the sidewalks. We've seen nudity visible from the street. We've had tenants that have been, you know, felons of violent crimes, arrested for breaking parole that have been staying in that house at some point. People in my driveway handing each other a white, a bag with white powder and exchanging money. To me, that sounds like they're dealing drugs in my driveway. And the, and the worst part of all, and the most concerning to me, and what brought me here really, was the recent shooting at 6:00 PM in the evening on a short-term vacation rental and plantation. Same owner, same management company. And that's the kind of crowd that we've been facing now for many years.
I'm going to give you 30 seconds if you want to address the issue. I'm going to give you 30 seconds if you want to address the issue.
Yes, yes. Basically, my sense of safety is basically gone. I wonder if we're next. And the problem with approving the variance for them is that it will allow for their short-term rental to have, you know, paved the highway for them to get theirs approved. I don't know how you could not approve one if you approved the other. And that feels to me dangerous. If the police, if we call the police, and we do call the police, of course, we call the police. That's our right. If they come and patrol and they cannot even see through, you further conceal something that is concerning. So thank you for your time. That's my reason to, please, don't approve this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I have a?
Yes. I was going to ask you to.
Yes. So I understand there may be more people wishing to speak. If you could please focus on the variance issue. I understand there is an Airbnb nearby. That's not the issue tonight. The issue tonight is a variance. The variance is concerning the height and the opaqueness of the fence. And if you could just please keep your comments regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to get a physical copy of this. I think I emailed everybody this.
Mr. McKee, if you could say your name and address.
Mike McKee. And it's 13700 Pine Meadow Court in Davie.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I am here respectfully to urge the council to reverse the approval for variance V25065. The decision raises serious concerns, not just about one property, but about the integrity of the zoning laws, public safety, and the precedents it sets for future cases. Under Section 12309 of Davie's Land Development Code, as well as Florida law, a variance may only be granted with three specific requirements met. Number one, there must be a unique hardship not shared by other properties. Number two, the hardship must not be self-created. And number three, the variance must be the minimum necessary to allow reasonable use. In this case, the hardship is entirely self-created. The applicant made deliberate choices that led to this zoning conflict. The gate in question is located outside of the property line, yet the applicant submitted site plans falsely showing that it was on the inside. When planning and zoning questioned this and asked for a survey, Marty refused. And a variance cannot be approved for a structure outside of the property line, and approving a variance based on inaccurate and incomplete documentation undermines the credibility in the entire review process. And the applicant also claimed near unanimous support, stating that she had obtained 12 letters of no objection, but planning and zoning records only show seven. One revoked the neighbor, and one was outside the 300-foot radius that she just randomly got, meaning only five matched the official list. The official list included 16 properties, meaning 11 properties did not sign a letter of no objection. Even more troubling, the letters themselves are misleading. Neighbors were asked to sign off on a completely electrical opaque gate, a phrase that emphasizes automation while admitting the key fact that the gate is six feet tall, 100% opaque, and located in the public right-of-way, violating Section 12287 and 1233. Additionally, no code references are even mentioned on the letter. A handwritten note about replacing a damaged gate appears on all the versions, but in different handwriting, suggesting it was added after the signatures were collected. These letters do not reflect informed consent and should not be treated as valid endorsements. Let's also consider Section 12320, which requires all of the development decisions to be considered consistent with Davie's comprehensive plan. That includes protecting the public welfare and ensuring safety standards are met. The Marty gate violates Florida's hurricane safety requirements for high-velocity hurricane zones like Broward County. And under the 2023 Florida Building Code, gates must withstand wind speeds over 170 mile per hour and meet strict anchoring and impact standards. No evidence has been presented that this gate complies. Miami-Dade County, another HV/HZ jurisdiction, explicitly prohibits solid backing on gates. The Marty gate contradicts these practices and poses a serious risk to the neighborhood.
Just finish up, please.
All right. During the previous hearing for the gate, she cited the $9,000 investment. But under Florida law, financial investment is not a consideration of hardship, and this is established in King versus Dade County.
Thank you.
That's good enough for Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members, staff, audience. My name is Judith Machine. I live in 13700 Pine Meadow Court. I am the applicant's neighbor on the east side. I'll be as brief as possible. There was a planning and zoning meeting held July 8, 2025, where they denied, five to one, the following. The proposal did not comply with the town's code. The gate was too tall. The gate lacked the required slats for transparency, and the structure had not been properly inspected to determine whether it met wind load and current hurricane safety codes. The current gate design does not meet Miami-Dade NOAA standards, which are considered the benchmarks for hurricane safety in South Florida. I'm sure most of us here remember Hurricane Andrew back in August 1992, costing $27 billion, which is approximately $47 billion now. Four-by-fours, two-by-fours were flying in the air, houses collapsing due to poor inspections. This is why the Miami-Dade NOAA standards were updated to ensure safety measures are in place, yet this has not even been the focus in these variance meetings. I do not understand if there are, why there are ornesses in place, why they are not being enforced. I know Mrs. Whitman, at our first hearing in August, mentioned that. To be quite honest with you, if the regulations were being followed, we and our neighbors that have just spoken would not have been negatively impacted, as it would have been the right decision. The right decision being to deny this variance, based on the requirements a variance should fall under, not on how pretty a gate looks. The hostility from the applicant, Ms. Marty, regarding the discontentment of this variance meeting is such that we have been slandered, and libel, and even her husband, a few weeks ago, drove by our house, shooting the middle finger at us. We and our neighbors at the cul-de-sac have been harassed and have been threatened. And the applicant and her attorney, only excuse is that the neighbors are harassing her, and this is why she needs a gate. This is totally untrue. All of us have helped each other out. We have a group chat. We are there for each other. So I am so sorry that this is being presented to you in this way, but this variance, the reason we're here, is solely for the safety of our community, not because the gate looks pretty and all that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Do you want to speak, Ms. Munivar? All right, I'll give the applicant's attorney three minutes to respond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving us that opportunity. I appreciate that, and I know Ms. Marty does as well. I think we've heard some very moving testimony about the dispute that exists between this Airbnb owner and these people. The four people that just spoke are actually two couples that are currently in a lawsuit with the Airbnb owner over the activities that occurred involved, including multiple false calls to the police, at least alleged in the suit, and other activities that I don't need to get into. My only point being that it seems like my client has unwittingly found herself in the middle of this when she was asked to testify in one of the proceedings relating to that matter. Getting to the actual variance itself, I think Town Council has indicated that a permit's going to be required, and that should deal with any of these issues concerning whether it would be safe or not under wind load conditions. My client has no problem whatsoever applying for the permit. She is here tonight because the town asked her to apply for the variance, which is why we're here. And so I think, in this case, with the regulation the way it is, where it doesn't actually say anything about gates, I think it clearly does not regulate gates, but at a minimum, it's ambiguous as to whether gates are included, which is why my client finds herself in this position, in addition to the hostility that clearly exists here. So we would ask that you give us a chance to get that permit by approving the variance, and hopefully that will cause some of these issues to subside, and they can focus on their dispute with the other property owner, which we really have nothing to do with.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I met with Will Diaz today, and a permit will be pulled. So that is something that we did discuss. And I just wanted to thank you. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Was that all part of the open public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lewis, I'm going to let you begin because it was you who asked to have this reconsidered.
Yes, I'm the one that made the motion to reconsider. And I believe I misinterpreted the information on August 20. When the applicant presented the email from the town concerning the question of needing a permit to replace the gate, how the email was presented, I had thought the town made a mistake and had provided improper guidance. As a town, if we make a mistake, I feel we should stand behind that. But afterwards, I went and I reviewed the email. And the applicant asked if she needs a permit to replace her gate. The town responded in the email she did not need a permit to replace the gate and cites a 2016 permit number. The town only had knowledge of the originally approved four-foot gate that was less than 50% opaque. And as indicated in the permit, 20160078, the town had no knowledge the previous owner illegally erected a six-foot gate, as it was not permitted. Mrs. Marty purchased the property with the six-foot non-opague gate and probably had no idea that the gate was installed illegally. With that said, when she repaired the gate, she did it in what she thought was a legal gate at six feet. I can see the hardship concerning the height. However, Ms. Marty went beyond what she may have thought was legal by adding panels across the gate, making it opaque, which is not allowed. Our code here in the town of Davie does not allow gates to have an area more than 50% or more opaque. There are no hardships or special circumstances for this property that require an opaque gate. So I plan on making a motion to approve the variance of a six-foot high, non-opague gate, while denying the variance for an opaque gate. But I do want to hear from my peers up here on the council in regards to this.
Well, I stand by what I did at the last meeting and said, in terms of there being no hardship. But I'm willing to look into what you had to say.
Mayor, Mr. McKee had, and I guess someone else, had given some information, that handed it to the clerk when he spoke. I wanted to ask our town attorney if you had an opportunity to see whether that was actually part of our backup, and that is just an additional copy? And if it isn't, then is it admissible at this hearing at this time? Or do they need 24-hour notice? Because I really, that thick packet, I haven't had an opportunity to really review, nor would I with the item before us right now.
So I have no idea what was brought up. I could take a look. If it was the 89-page packet that was emailed a couple of weeks ago, I did review that.
Right.
It's the mayor's purview. If you want to take a five, 10-minute recess, I don't mind looking it over. The question is, is it admissible tonight? The answer is yes.
Okay.
It is admissible tonight. Obviously, ideally, everything that was admitted tonight would have been emailed to me, you know, prior to tonight, but nothing I could do about that.
Right, right. I know that because...
When he spoke, it sounded very familiar, so I'm just wondering if that's what he presented, the same thing that he presented at the last meeting. Yes.
Okay, because we did get emailed that as well. And that other information that is in the backup is something that we've also had from previous. And so the only thing that I see that was handed out that would be new information was given to us in an attachment today by the clerk office. I believe that was...
It's the letter from...
The letter from a resident who showed support, who was a neighbor.
I think that that's the way I read it. It sounded like that was the person that sold you the house. No, I just, it was very vague, the letter.
If you want to open it up, Mayor, you can have Ms. Marty come and explain that. I do have the memorandum from Mr. Quigley, who's sitting right next to me. And I heard Mr. McKee in the pews make a comment that the packet that was submitted was what was previously emailed. So you all have looked at it before. It's nothing new.
Right, he is acknowledging by shaking his head, yes.
Okay. Mayor, it's your prerogative to open it up again if you want to ask the applicant the question about what was provided to us.
Yeah, because it says on 1010, "I sold the house." 13640 Pine Meadow Court. The owners at the time submitted a letter of no objection. The new owners also signed a letter of no objection. Well, she sold the house.
I don't have that one. No, I have this one. I don't have that one.
Yeah, that's on the back of that front page.
Okay, that one too. Okay, there's two of them.
There's just one of them. There's just one.
Yeah, she sees it.
Did you want Ms. Marty to speak to that, whether it is? Is that what you said?
Let me see what I'm doing.
Okay, because I'm curious.
So my question is, if you want to come forward. Who sold the house?
I did. I'm a Realtor.
Ah, okay.
So I wanted to make sure that you both knew that the previous owner had no objection to the gate, and the current owner has no objection to the gate.
Did they submit a letter of no objection, or are you just saying this in this letter?
I submitted it to Mr. Quigley.
That was in the backup?
Yeah. Yes. I submitted it to Mr. Quigley. But I think that there was another owner that emailed the town as well.
No, because...
If I could clarify...
Is that the Chelsea?
Yes.
Hall-Solple?
No, that is the person who bought the house.
All right, thank you. I understand. Okay, thank you.
No, Ms. Marty owns the house for the variance in question.
Realtor, and she had sold another house to someone. Okay. That helped her understanding. Thank you. But like I was going to say, I still stand by my feeling about the hardship in this particular case, and I am really very concerned about opaque fences. And we have talked about this on and on and on with the administration and relationship to trying to bring some of those into compliance. As a matter of fact, I'd be interested, the pictures that you showed, they didn't have any addresses on them. So I would think that that was an incomplete piece of evidence that you turned in. But I want to hear the rest of the discussion.
Yeah, if I can still, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I am very sympathetic with the neighbors who are concerned with the Airbnb. But again, we reiterate that it is not the issue at hand. And we've struggled at the town level, at the county level, at the state level, in trying to get legislation that could help with those issues of Airbnbs and the problems that we continue to face with those. And so I'm extremely sympathetic. It's not just in your neighborhood. It's in multiple neighborhoods throughout this entire state. And if you think we have problems, beachfront properties are definitely concerned with their communities. My concern here, though, is about the gate itself. A number of factors that I do believe faced Ms. Marty in the purchase, when she purchased the house, she kind of inherited some of the issues, and for the same reason, I voted for it before. I believe there was a hardship that was there that was not of her own making. And honestly speaking, if there was an obnoxious Airbnb in my community, and I had the opportunity to put something that could shield me and my family, I would definitely shield my family with a fence or a gate, or a hedge, or whatever it took to shield my community and my family from what one resident today said was even nudity, or drugs, or other things that they exhibited. And especially trying to make it more safe for our children and our families, of the speeders and what comes out of that community. I just think, you know, that is a big enforcement issue. And I would suggest that every single time there's an issue with that Airbnb, call 911. I don't care if they hear from you 100 times. We build a case just like that to possibly invoke or revoke their Airbnb licensing. And that's the only tool that the state has given us. So, I mean, I'm going to still stand by mine. I don't believe that the hardship that was created was a creation of Mrs. Marty. I believe that the hardship was well-created before her. And the existing issues that are before us to evaluate are only fair if we move forward with granting her variance, to allow her to have the privacy and the enjoyment that she deserves in her home, just like everyone else in the neighborhood would. just like everyone else in the neighborhood would. Thank you.
Great. Michelle?
Oh.
Marla?
Mayor, like I'm saying, when Mrs. Marti bought the home and it had the six-foot gate, to me, that's a little bit of a hardship. I'm okay with that. But the opaqueness on it, I have a problem with that. And so when I make a motion, I'm going to make it for the six-foot, but opaque, I can't go with.
Okay. I don't think necessarily an opaque fence makes you any safer in this particular situation. Mrs.
I want a second turn when she's finished.
Yeah, I figured.
Okay. I just, it just reminded
Mr. Quigley, can you give me, I know we're doing the variance for just the gate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the hardship would be because the, evidently, the previous owner had put up the six-foot. And it was an open gate or not an opaque, correct?
The
Yes or no?
If you could ask your question again, please.
Okay, the previous owner that owned the property, there was the six-foot or the four-foot gate?
Well, the plans for the 2016 plans showed a gate that was three and a half feet tall. But later photographs from the Broward County Property Appraiser, even at street level, showed that at some point after that permit was issued, a six-foot-high gate was installed. That apparently happened before Mrs. Marti owned the property.
Okay, so then that would be the hardship, correct?
It's for the council to decide whether it's a hardship.
Okay, so if the gate was previous there as a six-foot and there was no doing to the owner or Ms. Marty that owns the house now, or, yes, that owns the property now with the gate on it, then that would be a hardship, correct?
But it wasn't opaque.
It can be considered a hardship, but that is for you five to decide. Myself or Mr. Quigley cannot make that decision.
Right, okay, so the opaque is not the hardship at all?
To me, it's not.
Same as the height, that is purely for you all to decide. Mr. Quigley or myself can't decide.
Okay, so whatever dispute they have in the, going along in their community has nothing to do with this. This is based on the decision that we're going to make as a six-foot opaque fence.
Yes, ma'am. And Mayor, if I could read the code into the record, I think that may help out. So the town code regarding variances, you are to consider whether there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land or building for which the variance is sought, which circumstances or conditions are peculiar to such land or building and do not apply generally to land or buildings in the same district and that said circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of such land or building for which the variance is sought. And that alleged hardship is not self-created by any person having an interest in the property. The granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the land or building and that the variance is requested is the minimum variance that will accomplish this purpose. That granting the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
Mayor, if I can, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion.
Well, I still wanted to ask a question.
You can discuss the motion and do that. Isn't, you know, we allow discussion after a motion is made?
You shouldn't. We have in the past, but we should have all discussion prior to a motion being made in second.
You know that, Mayor. We like to discuss it first. You were trying. The issue I had is a question, and we've discussed it with staff, is and I don't even know where it is in the backup, but there was a question about 50% opaque. You're either opaque or you're not opaque, is my understanding, right? So where the conversation and backup came in and discussions of how it could be 50% opaque is could you please discuss that information that we were talking about when we had our briefing?
Well, if you, reading, reading the entire code section in rural lifestyles regarding fences, there's actually multiple sections. One section talks about limitation on height, in this case, four feet because it's adjacent to a street. There's paragraph two, which deals with style. So there's only certain fence styles that are allowed. Black or green chain link, picket style and so forth. And all of the styles that are mentioned are generally at least 50% opaque in nature.
All right, Whitman, excuse me.
And then there's one more paragraph that says that there's, that the fences can be no more than 50% opaque. So those three things are all included in the code.
Okay, but we're talking about a gate, not fence.
Correct.
You keep referring to fence.
Well, again, but if you look at the, the rural lifestyle regulations are based on the concept of protecting and enhancing a rural lifestyle and the word, you know, the word openness is used. So to me, it's obvious from the whole, you know, when you read the entire section. I don't know why logically you would exclude gates from the conversation of fences because
I agree.
You know, the whole thing is intended to keep openness in neighborhoods.
But it was excluded and there is certain definitions within that. And the thing I'm concerned about is when they talked about the opaqueness again. I mean, you know, there's been discussion about, you know, whether it's safer to have a solid or a see-through gate. Well, those people that I know who have a solid gate feel more protected than those who have an opaque fence. They feel that their children can play safely, that they're shielded somewhat from whatever might be out there. So, I mean, that is, again, subjective. And so the testimony that we were given continually was about the safety. And, you know, that is not what is considered before us, I believe, at this time is this issue shouldn't be considered because it's all subjective on that. It's not in code. I just think that the hardship is there. It doesn't have a hardship against other people. There are, I've seen quite a few, not just the pictures that were given to us about similar solid fence gates, rather, in our community throughout the town. But multiple, multiple dozens of fencing and gates that were, if you will not have code as the, as was suggested. So I just don't think that
You're starting to repeat yourself.
Yeah, but I just don't think that at this point, you know, we, we've already opened that can of worms and we've had hearing after hearing after hearing with no new evidence. But yet a couple, maybe a couple more letters of support that came in writing, but no new evidence. So I'm going to continue to support this item.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis? Louis?
Mayor, if no one, if the comments are done, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. And I do believe, I wasn't aware personally that the fences were, the six-foot was the code, you know, when this first came up. But since then, you know, I have and I've really taken a look at it. And I don't agree with the opaque fence. And we have a lot of them that are six-foot. A lot of them were put in, I think, pre-2000. And I'm okay with the six-foot fence, but the opaque, I'm sorry, I'm not going to give on that. But, so I'm going to make the motion. I'm going to make the motion to approve the variance for a six-foot-high, non-opague gate. And I'm denying the variance for the
I think we got to clear that up in terms of the motion. You can't make a motion for something and then deny it.
The first part of what you said, Councilmember Lewis, was the proper way. So I just want to reiterate the first half of what you said.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the variance for a six-foot-high, non-opague gate.
Perfect.
He can, that's okay?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you like to have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
No.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now we know that you have to get a permit. It has to be inspected. And what? And it'll have to be 50% non-opague and also meet all the wind resistance. Does that come under the permit?
Yes, Mayor, that comes under the permit.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, this closes the public hearing portion of the meeting. Under report items, we have four proclamations. Florida Climate Week, Broward Green Schools Campaign Initiative. And this was based on a young lady, I think, from one of the schools that came out. Yeah, and she spoke to the, to the council. The Hindu Heritage Month and Dewali Day and the South Florida Mental Wellness Summit and Expo Day, which is October 23rd. We have two openings on the Ag Board. I think Councilmember Whitman and Vice Mayor. You what?
I have an appointment, reappointment for the Agriculture and Environment.
That's what she just asked. She's just asking.
You have an opening on that?
I have, I have a reappointment.
We don't, we're not doing reappointments now, are we?
Mayor, there is, under the Ag Board, there is a gentleman that had missed and he would like to appoint him.
Oh, okay.
Reappoint him.
All right.
I'd like to make much of reappoint Jeremy Webby, the Agricultural and Environmental.
Oh, is that why they didn't have a quorum? For that last meeting because Webby had missed? Okay. Did you just tell them the importance of being there that, because there are two people that resigned, so. We have a few names that have been given. Have you, have you been working on that? Did they contact you?
We had emailed the applications on the names that we had gotten, so we're waiting to hear back.
All right, thank you. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that at the next meeting. We don't have any committee recommendations, I don't think. No, no old business, no new business. We have two meetings in November. And now Councilmember comments.
Michelle, I'm going to let you go first this time, so we won't take away any of your thunder.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark your calendars for Saturday, October 25th, 2025. The Town of Davie Police Department is partnering with Erica Garcia from the Cooper City Animal Clinic to offer free microchipping services for Davie residents interested in pet identifications. This service will take place at Robins Lodge Park located at 4005 South Hiatus Road from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For more information on this service, contact the Animal Control Code Inspector Karen Forsani. Thank you, at 954-693-8291. Coming up on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, the Town of Davie is hosting a community meeting about the Orange Drive Pedestrian Sidewalk Project from Southwest 67th Avenue to Southwest 92nd Avenue here at the Pine Island Multipurpose Center at 6:30 p.m. Hurry up, folks. The deadline is approaching for October 24th, 2025. If you have not registered somewhere that lives in Davie and is celebrating 90 years young or above for our Town of Davie's November 8th, 2025 Centennial Celebration, please go to the town's website and complete a residence recognition form. Last but not least, happy birthday to all our October babies. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Couple, just real quick, I don't have much, I want to thank the Fire Department. We have had the family that had a fire and was burnt out. The American Red Cross had assisted as well. And I want to thank the Fire Department, but I want to thank the Red Cross as well for always being there to assist our community and our families in their time of need. One of the things I would encourage everybody to do is to go to the American Red Cross and you can, it's redcross.org and donate either financially or you can volunteer. You can also donate specifically to home fires, which goes directly to their home fires. Anyone that might be in the community that gets burnt. And I really think that the American Red Cross over the years, whether it be any natural disaster, man-made, such as a fire or other things that happen in the town, they've always been very good. I had the privilege of being able to tour their facility a few times now. And we partnered with them over the years on a number of projects, including installing fire suppression and smoke detectors. So thank you again to our Fire Department and I encourage everybody for the American Red Cross. And actually, I'm going to not go into all the other things. I'll be fine. I know you need to get back.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a real quick one. I also want to commend the Fire Department and the Police Department. I had a need to ask them to do a welfare check on one of my constituents and they did and they took care of it with, with them very professionally. And I want to thank them for doing that. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Want to inform those that don't know at this time, but we are under a rabies alert for a portion of Davie. And we had a confirmed case of rabies and a raccoon found near I-595 in September 2025. That alert included the area between I-595 North to Southwest 26th Street South, the Southwest 112th Avenue, which is Hiatus, and Southwest 148th Avenue West. It's a pretty big area. Residents should avoid contact with wild animals and ensure their pets are vaccinated on a leash. There's also points here that were given to me and it says a raccoon. Well, let me go, how to protect yourself. Your pets should be vaccinated. I know in my area, there's a lot of raccoons. And to be on the safe side, please, a lot of people don't vaccinate for rabies because they think, you know, my dogs are in the house, but please, vaccinate them. Avoid all the contact with wildlife. Do not approach or handle any wild or stray animals, especially those that appear sick, aggressive or unusually friendly. Please keep your livestock secured to be protected from them. And if you are bitten or scratched by an animal, please seek immediate medical or veterinary attention and report the incident to the local authorities. Rabies is very deadly and dangerous, so please heed this warning. We could have announced this at the last council meeting, but we didn't get this information until the next morning, after the council morning. So I wanted to make sure that anybody that hasn't heard that will heed this warning and protect themselves and their pets accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I have a bunch of stuff. And but I'd like to start out to say that I am a regular donator to the Red Cross. And as a matter of fact, I always give them a substantial amount of money from when I'm closing out an election campaign account, which leads me to the fact that I, what most people know, but I wanted to announce that I have made out the paperwork and I am in contention again for Mayor of the Town of Davie. So I will be running again in '26. We had a chamber breakfast the other, or chamber luncheon last week and Arianna and Cameron made a presentation on the, are they here? Yeah, they, oh, okay. A presentation on the 100-year celebration, the centennial celebration. So you really did a very nice job and I appreciate that you did that. We had a meeting with Commissioner Geller. He usually does that for all the communities and was very, always very helpful for us. and, uh, was very, always very, um, helpful for us. Today, I went to a workshop, uh, the Broward Leaders' Resilience Roundtable, do you have those two slides for me? I was very pleased, as we were going through, uh, the program, that the Town of Davie is in really a good position in relationship to this, the, the resilience programs, and just some of the things that were included that they're encouraging people to do, um, in relationship to swales, um, pervious parking lots and roadways, uh, pumps, controls, culverts. It was very exciting to know that we have taken some action, uh, in all of the areas that they mentioned, and also, as far as, uh, I think there's another one there, uh, project types that they're looking at. If you'll notice, the five, top five project types that they've listed, for Broward County, storm water infrastructure, check. Coastal flood, we don't fall into that. Waste water infrastructure, check. We had a workshop today on potable water and the use of, of wastewater, so, and I even mentioned that today at the, at the workshop, and everybody was very happy to hear that we are taking the steps to move in that direction. The other two really don't, uh, apply as much, uh, living shoreline doesn't, but erosion control does, and of course, transportation and evacuation, we're always working on. But it was good to see that we have gone so far, and we're ahead of the, I think, ahead of the curve, and some of the recommendations there that they mentioned, where it's planning tools and recommendations, green development incentives for projects, delivering, uh, basin-level benefits, we have been talking over and over and over again about storm water, storm water storage, and, and taking care of the water, that's, that's the last point there, reducing impervious cover. This is something that I love to see more of, and, uh, the swales we've talked about over and over again, we have to really get a plan in action, an education plan in action on the swales, because that is one of the reasons why I think we have such bad flooding on some of the streets, because people have filled in their swales, they, they don't hold water, and the water just runs off their property and into the street. So that's an area where we're gonna have to do a lot of educating. So, that was really a, a very good experience, and I, I was very pleased, and I thank Mr. Quigley for being there with me. He took lots of notes. And one of the things that they mentioned was extreme heat cooling centers that some people have done, and I was wondering if we could just take a look at that, if we have a need for something like that, um, where we could identify as a, um, cooling center for individuals that may not have air conditioning, uh, that's working properly, um, then the heat gets really, really bad. I also went yesterday, and I was sorry that I wasn't able to do the student, uh, awards at the police, for the police station. I went to Cleveland Clinic in Weston for the unveiling of the Rita and Rick Case Corridor at, at the hospital, and Rita was just so thrilled to, to have me there, and Peggy Brown was there from Weston, and Nan Rish from, from the commission, and it was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. She donated $2 million to Cleveland Clinic, for which they named the front corridor in the clinic building A after her and Rick, so that was really very, very nice. I just wanted to thank, uh, fire department and, um, our horse rescue people for, they rescued a horse that had gone down in the mud on 70th Avenue. Uh, we're very, always very proud that, uh, we're able to have the equipment to be able to do that. As long as it was brought up, I'd like for, um, us to pay a little more attention to that Airbnb-
Yeah.
-in, uh, that neighborhood that they discussed today. It does sound like, uh, it really needs to have some, and you're right, too, when you said, told them, no matter what it is, no matter what time, dial 911, because you gotta build up, and then they must have the police write a report, so you need to build that case up. Let's see, another thing, yes, you know, we're, we're a Purple Heart community, uh, we have identified our Purple Heart Trail with various signs down Davie Road. What I'd also like to see, for, for us to do, is to place some Purple Heart Community signs at our entrance points, uh, in, in the town, where we have the big sign, "Welcome to Davie." Uh, I, I'd like to see the, um, that Purple Heart Community sign for people to see at, every time they come into a major entrance into the town, so I'd like you to look at Last but not least, I think it's, not waiting any later, I'd like to propose, uh, canceling the second meeting in December, which we usually do as, uh, an opportunity to give staff and people a chance to get ready for the holidays, um, and somebody would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to cancel the last meeting in December, 17th.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Congratulations, Steph.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you very much. Ms. Lamack?
Thank you, Mayor, just, uh, real quick, I wanted to correct a statement made today at the Potable Use Workshop. It was stated that we would bring back a resolution for town council consideration on the November 15th, 2025 council meeting, which we don't have one there. I just wanted to correct that it will occur at a council meeting in November, but not on the 15th. That's all, thank you.
We'll forgive you. Alan, you have a report?
No, Mayor, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no objections, we're adjourned.